Everyone, I call this order, this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is July 9, 2024, and it's 7:05 PM. Will the clerk call the rules, please?
Councilman Musa?
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Rafai, and Councilman Sidman are absent, but we do have a call.
Thank you. Let's write for this resolution. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Do we have any community announcements?
Just a longstanding one about the T Wellness Center. Still on there for the 15th through 19th. However, they are blocking a little bit about being out front now. So just, I would say, watch Facebook for updates on that. We might have to move the location because now they're a little sketchy on doing it out front. But I, we're working through that. They're saying the rig might not fit out front after the fact, but I think we'll be fine. Just watch Facebook.
All right. Any other announcements? All right. Looks like we don't have any proclamations or recognitions in presentation. Do we have any additions or deletions today, agenda?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to table this from new business. Number F, Decision Council, Government Planning Commission. I'd like to be tabled this one for the next meeting.
Do we have any support?
Yes.
Is there?
Yes.
Call in favor?
Aye.
No, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask why you are tabling this?
Uh, you can.
So we're not voting? You did not vote on this?
We're gonna vote on it.
I know, but you guys voted, now you're discussing. So you wanna retract it? You wanna discuss before you vote on it?
I guess, yeah, they need to discuss.
Okay.
Okay. So, Councilman, go ahead.
No, I guess I ask the mayor, what are you tabled this?
We, we, a lot of things we table for the next meeting. Very rare times we're gonna ask why to the reason. Next meeting, cousin Sadman will be here also. Five people who can make the decision, better decision, in my opinion. And we can talk to our colleagues, see some of the conflicts they are, conflict they are going on. So maybe we can solve this one very smoothly and easily.
Okay.
Don't need to go direct each other. Maybe I talk to, I need to talk to one, two, or three of our councilmen. We can make the solution better. I don't have any disrespect against anybody else, but maybe if I talk, we can get something better solution.
So just for, for the, the, the council, the planning commission, the ex-official member is appointed by the city council. Every other member is appointed by the mayor. So this is your decision, guys, who should be the ex-official member from the city council in the planning. You guys will have to decide on it. I will try to stay away from influencing this decision because it's yours.
Mr. Chair?
It's only one person in the planning.
Is it more than one person interested for the position or, I mean?
I don't know. It has to be one city council.
Uh, so I think you guys are having a discussion outside the bounds of what you're, you're talking about. So that would be a discussion for that app. Basically, you're doing what you were supposed to do in app right now. So gotta retract it. Basically, are you tabling it or not should be the only question.
That's all, discuss later.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, do you guys wanna vote on tabling this resolution now?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Gonna individually vote?
I mean, since I, I think the city council should make the decision. Maybe it's better for all of them to be involved in this decision.
So table it until the next meeting or table it until everyone's here?
At least the next meeting.
At least for the next meeting.
I just, I need to ask the person who's tabling it. I'm sorry, I can't have everybody answer.
Um, do you have any idea what time, when it's gonna be? He'll be coming back?
I, I don't believe this month.
But at least for next meeting, I wanna, during the next meeting.
Yes.
So to June, to July, I believe it's the 25th, just one moment. Uh, July 23rd. All right, Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Well, also no, because this don't make sense when the other councilmen are coming. There's no specific date, they are coming back for next week, but no.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Do I have to vote on this one?
You do, of course, it's a tiebreaker.
Well, even if I say no, I'm not gonna break the tie on this one here because it's a.
It's just, you're just voting to table it.
If you, if you vote yes, it tables to the next meeting. If you go no, it stays on this agenda.
Well, what if it stays on this agenda and then we have, we have the same outcomes now when we discuss?
Well, it's only a discussion. You're not voting on a resolution. It doesn't, you don't, you have to motion for a resolution for it.
Yeah, you might go to motion.
Right now, it's only a discussion.
So let's keep it for discussion, but we are not gonna vote on it.
Sure.
So whatever we were gonna discuss now, we'll discuss at the end, and then you guys decide.
So your vote is no.
So I'll say no until we discuss it today.
So no, okay. So, Mr. Mayor, the tabling of F to July 23rd has not been approved, so we will keep F on the agenda.
So we'll discuss that later.
Okay.
That's a chance to hear everybody's opinion on that.
Mr. Chair?
I guess we done after the voting on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have another addition or deletion? Do you have another addition or deletion?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to remove the resolution consent agenda D from the agenda.
Do we have support? A second. Some, call in favor?
Aye.
No objections? All right, so we'll move.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a closed session. The city attorney has brought to our attention that there's some litigation that needs to be discussed on the ordering case that has developed.
All right. So now we have the updated agenda. Resolution D from the consent agenda will move.
I still need somebody to motion to add this closed session, please.
I'll take the motion. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right. So Resolution D from consent agenda will be moved to, to be, uh, to be Resolution G in the new discussion? Right?
No, he just removed it.
No, he said.
Yeah, you removed it.
He just removed it.
Okay, all right. All right. So.
Now we need, if that's any more additions, if no more additions or deletions, we need to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to update this? Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the amended agenda has been approved. So any more additions or deletions?
Not that's it. We're ready for.
All right, so we, we move now to the public comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cindy, Queen? You have three minutes.
Hi. I just wanted to talk about an organization that I work for. It's called Global Alliance Solutions Foundation. And we're a 501(c)(3) organization. We help refugees and asylees. And if they've been here up to five years, okay? And they have to have status as refugee or asylee. But we have a program called the Ethnic Community Self-Help Program. And we provide like basic needs, job training, education, ESL tutoring. We have a lot of different workshops. We help with financial planning. We have a lot of different programs that help people, you know, get adjusted to living here and to be successful. Most of our staff speaks Arabic, but we have also staff that speak Pashto and Dari, which I'm not sure if there's too many people from Afghanistan here, but we do have staff that speak those languages. Also French and Spanish. Okay? Um, and then we also have a program that's, that helps victims of human trafficking, both sex trafficking and labor trafficking. And for that program, you don't have to be a refugee or asylee. It's open to everybody. So it, you know, you could, the person could be a U.S. citizen and we can still help them. And also with that program, we have, we give presentations to the public to educate people how to see the signs and what to do if you suspect that somebody is being trafficked. So if you're interested in seeing a presentation about that, you can contact us.
Thank you, Cindy.
Question. Cindy, I don't know how come you don't have any last spoken employees because I'm trying to get this. If it's not majority, then a second majority, Bengali population here. So I hope you'll hire someone who can explain in Bengali language to Bengali community. Also, do you have any customer service number? We can relate it to the people or community.
Yeah, I have some flyers and my card. Should I just hand it up?
If you can give it to me, and I'll put them at the vestibule tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and then you can talk.
Thank you so much, Cindy. Brian Wolfe?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Brian Wolfe. I'm the director of programming for an organization called Passenger Recovery. We're an organization that provides support to individuals and families who think they may have issues with substance abuse disorder, opioid disorder, alcohol, things like that. We've been a 501(c)(3) in Hamtramck since 2016. We were nationally accredited by Face and Voices of Recovery and ARCO in 2022. So we're officially nationally certified. And we got funding this year to open our community center on Kniff. We're on Kniff in the old convent across from St. Lattislaus, between the pawn shop and the new barber shop. We're open five days a week, and we basically provide peer recovery support services and counseling. So if anybody thinks they may have an issue or a family member may have an issue with any kind of substance abuse disorder, simply wants to speak to someone, we can get people into treatment. We will take people to deal with resources, for example, clothing, food, counseling. We're basically a gateway to other services to help people who think, again, they may have a problem. Our services are all free of charge. We do provide translation services. And we've checked pretty much any language that would be necessary in Hamtramck. We provide translation. And again, it's free of charge. We are financed, we're funded by the state of Michigan, by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. So we're very officially certified. They check this very carefully. And we, we're looking to expand our activities, and we also offer a lot of community activities. Things like acrylic painting workshops, writing workshops, different activities. And if there is interest from the community, we're very willing to add other kinds of activities. So we're here for the community as a very neutral resource for people to just come in. And if they think they may want some help or advice, or just would like someone to talk to, we are available Monday through Sunday from 12 to 8 PM. So if you have questions for information, I'm gonna leave some flyers here, and I'll also leave my business card. We're glad to be here in Hamtramck. There's a real need here. There are no services of this kind that are being offered here right now. And anything we can do for the community, we're just basically here to help. So please reach out and let us know if there's any need for any, any further services that we may be able to offer. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Bogdan Shijorski?
Listen, I got a picture about skiing all over the city. I'm retired and I took one day on my street. I can't, 120 cars go my, my street. One process only keep 40 fast. I saw the guys, they drive 65 per hour my street. You know, old residential street in Detroit, they got sticks, how to say, ski bar, make it down.
Speed?
Ski bar. And why Hamtramck got not this up? They, 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 they speed all over the city. You know, you, you did a good job with it all over the stop and stop. But this is not nothing means, they still going. Okay?
We'll work on that, for sure.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bogdan. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have one email comment. Mr. Mayor is going to read that comment.
All right. This comment is sent by Mr. Blackwell. And it's, he's saying, "Good evening. Mayor Gallop is a hypocritical and crooked mayor. Unfortunately, Mayor Gallop acts in the manner of a dictator because he cannot tolerate opposing viewpoints. He does not represent the true definition of freedom and democracy."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is all the public comment.
All right. No more comments?
That's it. Gotta save the best for last.
I appreciate that. All right. So we move now to the consent agenda, and this is approved, a single motion with no discussion. We have approval of minutes from the June 25th, 2024 regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoice register date ending July 9, 2024. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending July 9, 2024. Can I get a motion?
A motion.
Chair?
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We move to the new business now, and we have the first resolution, 2024-74, approving site plan review 2201, Kniff Street, Mesjid El Sunnah Mosque expansion.
Oh, good.
Mr. Mayor, I have Carolyn here to discuss this. Carolyn, this is, that's one of my.
Okay, go ahead, Carolyn. Now, we also have representatives from the mosque here as well, if you might hear from them.
Exactly, yep. Hello, council, hello, mayor. Basically, this is an expansion of a, of a building. It's a mosque. It's currently one story. It's going to be three stories if approved. There's also a slight expansion to the rear, but mostly the expansion is going upward. The uses of the two new space, of the two new floors include offices, library, prayer areas. They're all listed in the site plan that you have received. There was a site plan report which was completed in March of this year by McKenna, along with a lot of details, basically showing how it does conform to our zoning ordinance. They did need to go to the ZDA for something called expansion of a non-conforming building, which is pretty technical. There really were no issues with that, and that passed at the ZDA, I believe in June. And so that was kind of the only thing holding them up. Now they're here for site plan approval. If you approve it, they will go to the building department to begin pulling building permits.
All right. Any discussion about that? Any questions? So it's gonna be two, second, and third story, right?
Yes, so it's currently a single story. The plans are on board docs, but they're also here. So basically, it's, it's just a one-story with like a roof, kind of looks like a house right now, but it will be a three-story building instead.
Bogdan, anyone wants to elaborate on that? Do you like?
Bismillah, al sana'at, al sana'at, al sholilat. In the name of God, who is the greatest, who is merciful. If the city has any questions regarding the project, I'm here to answer. However, it's a noble project for the community where we service the youth, the adults, hoping and praying that we will bring about greater citizens as Muslims in Hamtramck. And we need to expand because we need a lot of office space, counseling room. We have a lot of social issues that we need to address. And with that, we're requesting the city to give us permission to have this site plan approved. And I'm here to answer the questions. They may need help to convince the mayor, the council, and the rest of the gentlemen and gentleladies to approve this project.
So the, you're gonna need a three floor?
Yes.
Uh, the three floor, they're gonna use the whole damask or they're gonna make one floor the office?
So the, the second floor is going to be that main prayer hall. The first floor is gonna have an office.
First one.
Yeah, first they have an office. And a, what we call it, a crying room. Like when, you know, when the children, with children, you don't leave them in the prayer area because they make too much noise. So we gotta put them in what is known as a crying room, a babysitter room, or a place where they could be looked after. So people can worship with peacefully. Third floor is gonna have offices and library. And there's a, uh, one place allocated for Imam's residence. So that's what the setup of the building is.
They're gonna leave it in the third floor?
I have one question too. How many people are committed for this plan?
When you ask, ask the questions about community, I'm not clear. Those who attend or those who don't?
Any people that attend.
It's inside plan.
It's, it's, it's on site plan right now. Right now, we have an average on the Friday, like 75 people. Daily prayer is about, I would say, 30, 35.
Councilman?
And do you have any special parking space?
No, we have been given the waiver not to have parking since the beginning of our existence. There's a letter that has been submitted to the plan. We don't require parking because there's an ordinance in the city that has a waiver.
We also don't require anymore in the district for anybody?
Going on Muslim Puhul restaurant, I think that's not a bad idea to extend mostly. And I see sometimes, you know, space was really congested, so it's just. You'll be, you're extending and spending money.
Most people on that neighborhood walk to the, to the mosque. They, they don't require parking.
Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman?
Okay. So we have to speak a little bit about the knowledge of these gentleman. This is the gentleman, it's more, most of the educated Imam, not only the Islamic, about the U.S. Constitution and Michigan Constitution. This is the gentleman brought the Constitution for us while we was have a resolution to sacrifice the God that day. And he is the one brought the United States Constitution, the section, and Michigan State section. If we don't approve, we will be the lawsuit by the Constitution. So that kinds of Imam, a religious person, educated person, we needed in the Hamtramck city. And like the mayor said, that area, walking distance, lots of people come and pray. Sometime I go pray over there, and it is nice place. And should not be any issue. There's some question came from councilman. Which floor gonna go what? All the floor will be used for this Islamic center. That is the clear answer. Thank you.
When we ask, excuse me, when we ask with the floor, this place, with, you know, with this space, with the whole area, it's not even one car to Barqallah. We have to ask, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do for this location? What are you gonna do for this space? And no space, no space for Barqallah. You're gonna do Islamic, it's okay. You're gonna do this and this and this, it's no problem. And nothing to do with the, what we have behind what, okay, you know, I can care for that.
I'm not clear.
Just ask for the place. What we have, the space, this location, do you have enough?
Are you asking about parking or the building itself?
Yeah, the councilor asking the, how are you gonna accommodate parking? But as we say, many people walk to the, uh, we don't.
Most of people walk.
But he's, he wanna know what's the future, do you have a future plan for parking spot like this?
No, there's nobody else, they don't have any idea. That's why I said.
We didn't ask him, give you the whole detail in your application. I just asked the place, the Barqallah, the space, do you have enough? Use this space for a lot of thing for Islamic. I agree with the Islam. And this, this is space for this location. Do you agree this one, we're gonna make enough? Even one Barqallah for the one car?
Okay. If it's okay, I'd like to speak to that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't require any parking in C2, and we are not allowed to because of our ordinance require it. We can't require it for some and then not, not allow it for others. So it would be going against our own ordinance to require them to have parking. So if we have comments, it has to be something that's in accordance with our ordinance. Maybe if you see something that isn't in alignment with our ordinance that we've already adopted, that would be a proper reason to reject the site plan. But it can't be for parking because we do not currently, in our zoning ordinance, require anybody to have parking in C2.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There is a couple of mosques don't have the barque, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we was 20, 30 years ago. We ask now, I agree what you want to do for Islamic is okay. We're gonna find out the space, we have enough for the Barqallah. I do say don't do that one.
So I will answer your question.
Do what you want, but find out the good place.
I will answer your question. As the good lady has mentioned, by law, we're not required, number one. Number two, in the beginning of our organization, we've been given this approval with a letter, an agreement, which you can check in the file, that, number one, we're not required to have. But in the event, and I'm not quoting, but the meaning, in the event we happen to have some sort of event that requires parking, then we will rent bus or some coach to bring people from different directions of the Hamtramck area. Have we had any such thing? No. And theater, A and T Theater. Every weekend, they have a program. And the place is full, including they use the library to park their cars. For us, we thank God, we have enough parking on Kniff. We have enough parking on Lumpkin's. We have enough parking on Fleming, et cetera, for the limited amount of people that do attend. And we have not had any traffic issues in our area. And if there are any traffic issues in our area, Hamtramck has a DOT in place to ticket anyone who violates any parking, any parking regulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Site plan, you show us, this one definitely. And I asked you a question about the parking. I just don't ask, it may be the C2, it won't need it. I wish you good luck for everything, and we're gonna pray out there, and it's a beautiful building.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you, if you guys remember, we approved building three stories housing, and we discussed the parking, and that time, we said it's okay. I mean, so it shouldn't be a problem whether it's for a house, that's the issue, we already have one in Davenport. We did not require parking space for that. So this is the same thing. All right, so I guess we can vote.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that this has been a long time coming. Been working and going back and forth with the Imam for a while on this. I'm excited personally to see this development happen. I think they're just fine with this, encouraged, and so forth.
All right. And like Councilman Hassan mentioned, this is the guy who came in day one for the discussion of the sacrifice and told us about the whole story. And then he disappeared for six months, and then our attorney came back to that same point that he presented in the first meeting. So, which is the legal and constitutional report. So, thank you. So we can go ahead and vote.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-74 approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so next resolution, the resolution 2024-75A, approving first reading and setting the date for public hearing and second reading of Hamtramck zoning ordinance text amendment, chapter 155. Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have Carolyn again to discuss this one. I just want to add that this one contains the fence amendment, which a couple of councilmen have asked for for quite some time, that we had to send back to zoning, and then zoning did. Uh, that we had to send back to zoning, and then zoning did, uh, approve it and then send it back to you guys for front over. But there is much more in this than Carolyn will let rate.
Great, so this has to come to council twice. This would be the first, today's first date. And then the next final date would be in a month, roughly from today. Um, so basically, there's eight types of changes. Um, they're summarized, uh, right here in the, the agenda item. Uh, so the first is for event halls to be regulated and allowed. They're currently sort of in a grave space, they're not really listed. And so depending on who's in charge, they might categorize them differently or allow them or not allow them because it's just not very clear. It is clear that nonprofit event spaces are allowed, you know, like nonprofit foundations that have events. But there's a lot of requests for for-profit event spaces. Uh, they could be like party locations, banquet, um, birthday party things. Uh, so we have quite a few of those. So basically, it's just creating a definition and a regulation for that. Um, they would be allowed, but with a special land use approval. The next would be to allow some limited types of LED strip lighting to be used in businesses, in the central business district and multi-use district. Um, this really came, uh, I don't remember who brought it to the planning commission, but someone brought it to the planning commission and they talked about it extensively. Um, LED strip lighting is essentially like the, the lights that are very thin. Um, they go often around windows, um, in businesses just to sort of attract attention. A lot of businesses have them. Um, they're not currently allowed. So this would allow them sometimes in certain circumstances. So, um, the third one, C, is right now, if someone is doing a facade renovation, which is basically the front of their building, what everybody sees, wood is not allowed at all. So it allows some types of wood to be used on commercial buildings sometimes. So we already have brick, glass, metal, other things are allowed. It's adding another material, um, to that. Um, D is to modify a parking lot requirement. Basically, this was put in for small parking lots. Uh, but we learned that these type of calculations in engineering is just not feasible for small parking lots. It's very costly, it could cost like ten thousand dollars in engineering just for like five parking spaces. But we would still have a lot of engineering requirements and rules for stormwater management for large parking lots. So that would remain, like the large parking lot requirements, but we would be removing some of these requirements for the small parking lots uh, in terms of stormwater management. Um, number, or letter E is to increase the area of projecting signs permitted. So a projecting sign, you have wall signs which are just flat on a building, but projecting signs stick out like this, so when you're driving, you can see it or when you're walking, they stick out over the sidewalk. So, um, currently, they are allowed, but only up to six square feet. So an example of one that would fit within this is a meat, I think a meat cheese pizza, um, the juice box on Joseph Campo, they have these like little signs sticking out. Um, so, but currently, they're restricted to six square feet. So it would be much larger, it would be sixteen square feet. F is to allow for exterior security gates. Currently, we only allow interior security gates. So if you wanna have security bars, they need to be behind the glass. But, oh, you know what, that photo doesn't show it. It must have not had it then. Do you have a more recent one?
Uh, this was in twenty sixteen.
Go to the, go to the view in the corner of the...
Here?
No, can you be like a, right here?
Oh, down here? Let's start here? No.
Right now, just leave this up. Right now, if you go to this corner, there's a sign sticking out, like over the sidewalk. I don't know why it's not on here, this is, that's an older picture. But that's the kind of sign that we're, that we're talking about. Okay, so what, for security gates, currently, if you have something very like valuable, you wanna protect your store, you can only put security gates on the inside of the glass. You can't put it on the outside of the glass. So this would allow outside security gates and fencing. Um, G is to permit two fences alongside lot lines. So when you have homeowners next to each other, if one person has a fence, the other owner could also build a fence on the side lot line. Um, they would be just next to each other, like this close. There wouldn't be any, really space in between them. Um, and then the other one is, there was an H. This was really just technical. It was written multi-mixed use district, and it should be multi-use district. So there was like a typo here, so it's just clarifying that title. So do you have any questions about any of these? Uh, so again, this is not the vote. I don't know if you have any questions, just for your information. But the vote would be in August eleventh, right? Well, we saw the vote to set the date, though, right?
It's already in the resolution.
Okay.
So really, it's really not, no need for a discussion. If they have questions, it's fine. But the resolution already says that the public hearing is August eleventh, I think is the first Saturday.
I printed it in, I forgot to bring it up.
Yeah, hold on, I think so. So pretty much...
Question about if the fence close to each other, both neighbors. So if it's a weed, um, so it's gonna clean the weed, how are we gonna maintain this?
August thirteenth.
You know, I didn't bring this one to, uh, I did propose this ordinance, so I don't have a lot of background on this one, as it didn't come from me. I think it was originally proposed by council, and then it got kicked to the planning commission because they had to review it first. So I'm not really sure who would clean the weeds between it.
I can answer that question. It was the double fence. It was, the supervisor was coming to the council. Went back to the, journey planning, everything is coming through here. So there is the, it is, this is the metal fence, some of them. And right on there, it's gonna be the, let's example, wood. And there's no between them, either. If it is a new wood over there, it's the owner responsible, it's no issue.
I mean, if you have two wood fences, I don't know how that would ever be cleaned. But if you have, if you have a, a fence, if you have a fence that's like metal, you can kind of get it out.
If it's a wood, wood house, then it doesn't.
It would just...
It's gonna be difficult.
Well, they shouldn't do that, because they'd be taken in. And they're gonna have to take it out and clean it up.
Just, that's how they run, who's responsible.
Well, the ordinance says who's responsible for building the fence?
No, me do.
For maintaining it?
It's the owner.
Owner.
It's the owner's side, so whoever is the owner of that, you know, and then...
Yes, they're going.
There's two owners, isn't it?
Before, there was only one owner, so that person would be responsible. But it would become more complicated now because you have two owners.
It's two owners, it's in the ordinance?
Well, I mean, if it's, it just depends on whose side of the, of the property line it is. There is a property, you know, so...
There is the specifically house, your right hand side is you, that's it.
So the, two, there, there is like overlap on the stuff that we discussed in the planning commission, and now it's coming from the zoning. For example, the LED and the projecting sign, we discussed in the planning. And we sent it to the city council here. So now it came from the zoning, I'm not sure why is that overlap. But the LED, there was an argument about the level, the degree of the light. It's four now allowed. Planning commission wanted to make it ten, and then they failed to get the vote. And we were saying at least make it in the middle, like eight. So, because four, you can't really see it, it's, it's really dim. Uh, is it mentioned here?
So I have the notes, I wasn't at that meeting, but I have the minutes from the planning commission, and I can explain the process. All zoning amendments have to start with the planning commission, and then they have to get sent forward for recommendations. So that's why they, I don't, they honestly, they talked about these things for like six months to a year, probably. You've been there, seeing all the discuss, you've been there too. So they've probably been discussing these things for between six months and a year deliberating. So this is sort of the final. So then it has to come to council twice. So amendments are, you know, a big deal, because they have to do, go a lot of places. So the notes I have, the minutes that were taken, um, has a discussion of raising it from four, four-foot candles to ten-foot candles, but it says that that motion failed. So that's why it stayed at four moving forward. So basically, that's just, the counterargument to allowing these LEDs has been for some that they're just too bright. Like they're too bright, they're distracting. So basically, limiting the foot candles, um, makes, you can have these LED lights, but you can't turn them all the way up. They can't be like flashing and just really, really bright. But that motion to get to ten, um, didn't pass.
So I, I know it didn't pass that day because you didn't have enough members, so... But in other cities, it's about every city. Durban, Durban Heights, it's beautiful in the district, in the commercial district. Here, four, you can't really see it. When he presented the thing in front of us, four, it's, it's almost, it's dark, can't see it. So, in the, in this downtown area or the business district, it's not gonna annoy the residents there. So, a lot of people want that, business people. So I, I suggested that they do at least make it in the middle, between four and ten. Make it eight, because really people want that. And you can't just avoid it because one resident's complaining that he is near to a business and bothers him. But it wasn't very, it wasn't bright at all.
Mr. Mayor, uh, our city attorney advises, if you wanna like potentially pass part of this and take out that section and kick it back down to zoning, uh, that part of it, we could do that.
Mr. Chair? There is a, they've already brought it here. So it's up to us now, what we're gonna do.
We can amend it here.
What you can do is, sorry. Oh, yeah, so what you can do is, uh, and I'm sure council is probably gonna say the same thing. But what you could do is recommend the approval, uh, the amendment down to the planning commission. Planning commission would have to redo a meeting, vote on it the same way they did for this one, and then kick it back up for your approval. But I know council is...
On that one topic, not the rest of it.
Or, or we can send back to them. Go fix it and bring it back.
Correct.
Now the question is not there. Question is the one, we are appointing the joining people. Mr. Miller, you saying there is no people over there. Those kinds of people, we are appointing, who don't know nothing, no shit. Okay, and those people getting appointed. And that is the problem, I see. So if up to us, we say no, return to them, or we can amend it partially. If it is too low, we can send whole thing back. The section, you already there, somebody already there from the council or community, that you can advise them to modify it and bring it back.
So, so if we send it back, is it gonna be sent to the planning or to the zoning?
It's joining right now.
It's the planning, planning room.
The planning commission.
Yeah, if the planning room...
Joining to planning.
So, so, okay.
If you just reject the one, yeah.
So, so the argument at the plan, at the planning was about two items here. This one and the projecting signs. It's allowed now six feet, right?
Six square feet, yeah, it's like this, this big maybe.
The suggestion there in the minutes, someone was suggesting fourteen or...
It's sixteen, which is, would be like at least this big, but sticking off of your building, basically.
So, at the end, I suggested to meet in the middle, make it twelve or fourteen. But it was some kind of, uh...
Argument?
Argument, and people just wants to oppose each other in that. And that's why, uh, that, that H1 wants either my way or the highway. Extremely like two, either to the left or to the right. Why can't we meet in the middle? That, that's the thing, so, uh, and that's why we need to, you know, see if the planning commission will work with each other or make some changes.
Mr. Chair? I, 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 if it's possible, with the planning commission, I'd like to amend this resolution, uh, exception with the, the section, what, the section reading, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't know yet.
LED, right?
Yeah, so, exception with that one, we will pass, we can vote. And that's, okay. Then the exception, the, the paragraph of the item goes back to the, uh, the planning commission.
Just the LED section?
Yeah, each action.
So that'd be item D.
And the projecting signs. These are the two, uh, that they didn't agree on, and I would suggest to meet in the middle. I mean, that's, that's fine, you're like...
It's very high, sixteen is quite, I mean, we suggested twelve, we, we suggested a stack twelve. And then somebody...
We can recommend that. You can amend the minute, the lead, we are amending or not?
Yeah, we are amending, so we're sending a recommendation.
Okay, uh, please, I need, I need a motion.
You're also not approving it, this is just the first reading.
This is the special, right?
So you're, now, next time when we come for the second reading, what you'll see is gonna be different, it'll be, you'll have removed what you're amending right now and sending down. So I'm just bringing that up. If you're gonna, if you vote to approve, don't...
So we vote under condition, right?
So is it only removing what letter did we say?
B was the LED lighting.
B or D?
B and, B and the sign.
Sign, the projecting signs is E.
B and... Mr. Miller, I'd like to amend the Resolution 2024-75A. Exception with the, with the B and E.
I'll second.
Did you ask, come up with the number now? Eight for LED?
No, I think it's gotta go back to planning.
That's not gonna go back. Now, what if it's a figure in our ninety-twelve?
Can they make a recommendation when they start planning?
Right, that's...
This is a resolution issue.
So maybe that should be in the motion, like we are recommending this instead.
Yeah, Carolyn's actually right. So that's, because you're not, you're not...
Would you recommend, would you recommend? Would you recommend, like what they are saying, go ahead, that she can write?
So what is your recommendation?
So technically, they could reject it, send out the same thing, and then you could reject it again.
So what is your recommendation, because you're sending that?
Somebody's ahead of it.
Okay, I still, I, I'm sorry, but I still need a second before you guys discuss...
I need a second?
The second, okay.
Listen to Mr. Mayor proposal about his recommending and skated that.
No, just to make everybody happy, you have to meet in the middle. So eight for LED, twelve for the projecting signs.
Twelve square feet for projecting signs.
That's our recommendation, and then we'll discuss it in a...
And then eight foot candles.
So are we keeping it, or are we...
It's four now, so we'll make it eight, recommend eight.
Okay.
Correct.
But his, but Hassan's, Councilman Hassan's motion was to remove the two items.
We're removing it, but we're sending it back with a recommendation. Saying we're rejecting it for this reason, and here's our recommendation. So it will be in the minutes, I, I think, and then we'll present that to planning and say, this is what the council recommended, please reexamine.
Okay. If I comment it with the number, if it's not, it's negative.
I gotta wait for the mayor to tell me to vote.
I give a million time, because it's a one time.
Alright, I just say, never, mention the numbers.
I, I think, uh, sorry that time.
To vote on these other ones, to have connection.
Yeah. And so next thing you, you would provide this with, you could that.
So we are going forward or not?
Yeah, so we move now with the amended, uh...
With the number?
Yeah, and the, and the recommended numbers.
Yeah, I'm gonna do the number.
So, can we vote on the amendments?
Yes.
Yeah, with the number. With that number.
Okay, we're voting on removing, we're voting on removing B and E from the amendments to zoning.
With the number?
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Al Samiri?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud?
What do you mean, no?
He doesn't wanna remove amendments.
So, okay, that's, he is right, we already suggested number.
But the numbers are not going to be in the amendments.
We already amended any number.
We did a amended number.
But I'm sorry, with all due respect, the recommendations is not part of the resolution, so I'm not going to put it in, it's irrelevant. She can recommend whatever she wants to whatever board. But as a resolution, I'm amending to remove these two items off the resolution.
And you can add...
I, I can add, okay, we can recommend to the zoning.
Direct, direct Carolyn to recommend them.
Okay.
With the number.
Direct them to...
I got the numbers.
Yeah, we got, we got, we just right now with the number, we gotta prove it with the number. If it's not, you wanna tag the two or you wanna get to play game?
We're getting her.
Okay, recommends eight, eight for the LED?
And twelve square foot.
And then twelve for the signage, twelve square foot. Okay, can we, I'm gonna start over.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, amendment to remove B and E and Carolyn to recommend to the, to the boards and commissions to change it from eight foot to LED, you mean eight foot candle?
Eight foot candles and twelve square feet.
And twelve foot signage, approved.
That's correct.
But that's just the amendment. Now, we got, please...
I have to...
Sure.
Yeah, I have to bring the resolution as amended. Yeah.
I need a motion, please, a second.
I need the motion.
Okay. All in favor for the change?
Ah, yes.
Okay, and now, can we vote on the amendment itself? Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you wanna vote on this?
Uh, yes.
Yes, you are voting, or is yes your vote?
Yes.
Yes and yes, okay. Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty four, amended resolution twenty twenty four seventy five A approved.
Good, we got that.
All right, all right, so we're done with that, we move to the next one, resolution twenty twenty four dash seventy six, approving the renewal of workers' compensation, access insurance, and third party administration.
Over. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Ashana here and Amir to speak on this, plus a representative from the Creative Benefits Insurance Solutions here to speak on that, most of them. This is an annual renewal for our access insurance.
So, Councilman and Mayor, this is basically the access insurance we take out for the workers' comp. We actually, as a city, have been self-insuring ourselves as far as workers' comp is concerned. Uh, and this has been done for fifty plus years, that's how we've been doing it. And we are normally low what the actual, if we do a full insurance, then our cost is going to be higher. So, we've been doing self-insurance for a number of years. This insurance renewal is basically for the access insurance. So, we have certain limits where we cover the workers' comp. Uh, so, for example, for firefighters, firefighters, I think it's five hundred thousand. Now, firefighters is seven fifty, and for the rest of the employees, it's like firefighters and police, it's seven fifty. And for the other employees, it's five hundred thousand.
For occurrence.
For occurrence. And then, in addition to that, there is a cumulative limit of about two point five million rupees. Beyond that, the access insurance kicks in. Uh, so, the cost of the access insurance is about one hundred sixty two thousand for the year. Which also includes the cost of managing the entire workers' comp for our employees through the ASU group. Our, if we, if we look at the average of the last ten years on our cost, it's about one hundred eighteen thousand that we pay for the claims that we have. And this varies anywhere from seventeen to twenty thousand in one year to two twenty five, to thirty thousand, or to forty five thousand in other years. So, but the average comes out to be one hundred eighteen thousand. So, overall, the total cost, if you look at it, it'll be one hundred sixty two for the access insurance, plus like one hundred eighteen, depending on the claims that year, is going to be the total cost of workers' comp. You know, insurance. Uh, so, right now, we're here to basically get the council approval on the access insurance for workers' comp.
Mr. Mayor, in short, Creative Benefit Insurance Solutions is a broker, they farm this out to the various carriers, and they give us the best deal possible.
So, they, the dollar amount is for the unemployment in. No, the, the, the dollar amount of one hundred sixty two thousand is for the access insurance beyond our limits. And our cost for the workers' comp depends on, you know, the claims that get filed in that particular year. So, like I said, on an average, if you look at a ten year average, it was one hundred eighteen thousand. But it could vary between twenty thousand to two fifty thousand.
So, you, you have three components to the workers' comp program, and you've been self-insured since nineteen sixty five, so for a very long time, fifty nine years, as Amir mentioned. And so, the three components are that you have the access insurance he's referring to, you have a state-approved, third-party minister who administers your claims in accordance with the state requirements, and then you have your self-funded piece. And so, cumulative, that's where he's referring to, we have about one hundred and eighteen thousand in claims on an average, as low as twenty thousand, as low as, as high as two hundred and forty five thousand in a year. And then we have the TPA and stop loss, which is at one hundred and sixty two thousand. And so, the other thing is that we're in a very hard market right now in the insurance world. And so, we, I did negotiate both of these carriers to lock these rates in for you for two years, because if we don't, we're going to get another increase next year.
Is employee paying a premium on this month, or there's no premium for the employee?
No, no premium. It's, it's by state that we have to provide workers' comp.
Mr. Chair. So, what is the gain after this?
So, we, we took out, we took out the, if we, if we farm this insurance out and do a fully insured program, that is going to cost us about four hundred thousand. That was the cheapest that we got, three ninety seven something. And this way, this is going to cost, you know, somewhere between two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand max.
So, the, the other one, employee contribution.
There's no employee contribution.
Not this one, how about the other one?
No, no contribution.
How about previous list, fifty nine years?
No, there, there, this is a workers' comp where the state does not, the state, you cannot charge employees to contribute.
So, just questioning you, what we gaining, we are gaining.
We are gaining about, about a hundred thousand.
That's what we trust you guys, we are gaining, it is good and we okay.
Yeah, we are, we are gaining, I mean, if we, if we do a fully insured program, it's gonna cost us about four hundred thousand, and this is going to cost us maybe about two hundred and fifty to three hundred.
Max.
Max.
Okay, that's another one.
Who is far coming from?
From the general fund. So, it's counted for in the budget.
Yeah, usually you're saving hundreds of dollars.
Yeah, if you go to a fully, and that's why we have been self-insuring it, because it's cheaper to self-insure, and that's what we have been doing for fifty nine years.
Okay.
So, the recommendation is to go for an approval for two years, so that, you know, we can lock in these rates.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty four seventy six approved. Thank you.
Next one is resolution twenty twenty four dash seventy seven, approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Pantrym and Wayne County Public Department.
Over.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a fire chief here to explain this one. Uh, what this is, basically, it's a memorandum of understanding, so if there is another pandemic or anything, a public health emergency, Wayne County will provide us with the materials and supplies to do a closed. Just a closed point for us to get our prophylactic treatments. And without this in place, we will be without, this is just a matter of housekeeping, like an insurance policy, so if something does happen, they will provide it to us. Uh, once we have decided in agreement, I will, I will send in the forms stating to all our contact people, our appointed contacts, our district, county center, and everything will be lined up. And hopefully, we never have to use it.
Close point of dispensing.
Yes.
All right, any questions, Marsha?
Councilman Al Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty four seventy seven approved.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next one, next one is resolution twenty twenty four dash seventy eight, approving action regarding Wayne County rate of workers' usage properties.
Over.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, every so often throughout the year, Wayne County brings us properties that have been fully foreclosed upon, and as mayor, council are aware, we have the right of first refusal on said properties. Uh, this year, they brought us three properties, a lot on Carpenter, a house on St. Aubin, and a house on Dire Street. Um, the lot is very inexpensive, um, the cost is about sixteen hundred dollars to us. The house on St. Aubin will cost us about twenty one hundred dollars, and the lots, or the house on Dire will cost us about twenty seven thousand dollars. Um, I will caution you that the house on St. Aubin is currently occupied, so we will become instant landlords if we buy it. But that's not unusual for these type of circumstances. Um, but it's also quite possible that they will get in here and redeem it from the county as well during the process. But as council has done in the past, council has approved these purchases previously, and we have been quite successful with them. Um, at a minimum, I would say, let's get this lot, because we own the three lots right next to it, on Carpenter, and it would actually make those three more marketable, because they were right next to the party store there, which will give us some versatility on what we do with them moving forward.
So, the, the people who reside in this house, do they know about the insurance?
They do. The day we got this, I sent one of our employees over there to make sure they're fully aware of it, and of course, to survey the situation of these properties. And our, our employees spoke with them, and they were fully aware of it already.
So, they, they chose not to do anything about it?
Um, the house isn't in great shape, so I don't know if they're just letting it go, or really what their circumstances are, but, but they are aware. I can't speak to what they will or will not do.
So, if we don't buy it, then Wayne County will pick?
Yeah, essentially, Wayne County will just auction them.
The other house, does it, is it occupied now, or?
Hard to say, uh, we got no answer at the door. Um, you know, we weren't gonna make entry without being owners of the property, um, but it appeared it might be vacant, but it's undetermined. But, you know, quite often, we, we do get surprised with these and find that there are squatters in the map effect too, so, you know, if we do purchase these, we will obviously take possession of them, clean them, secure them.
Legally take possession.
Yeah. You know, uh, secure them properly, uh, and, you know, take all the proper legal means necessary, so.
So, we have seen in the past that when we buy these properties, we make money out of it, we sell them for a lot more. I mean, it's, it's not a good, it, it's a good investment for the city, but we, at the same time, don't want to compare to anyone, but if people are aware of what's going on and they chose not to take any actions, then, I mean, I don't know, we.
I would say it's probably better for the city in the long run to purchase these. The county's just gonna auction them off to who knows who anyhow. Then there really is zero control over what happens with them, and honestly, who knows how long it would be before anyone does anything with them. At least, the city has some measure of control of what happens with these houses and property, uh, if we do purchase them, because I will guarantee that we will at least clean up the properties, secure the buildings. Um, if there is something that the people decide to do with them, this will definitely nudge them to get it out of foreclosure, if the county allows them to. You know, I, I, I do think it would probably a wiser decision for us to purchase them, just, and rather than just let Wayne County just auction them randomly.
Right, and then you'd also, Wayne County has thousands, or, I mean, maybe hundreds, I don't know the number, but they have a lot, so like Max is saying, to secure the property, to make sure that it's, would be better, it would be better for us to be able to do it, because we actually can concentrate on the few that we have, rather than.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is actually Wayne County favoring us.
Yeah.
Okay, they can, they can go take the money off the market. So, there's the, few years ago, the Wayne County Chancellor and everybody tried to help, give something to the Hamtramck City, reasonable price, then Hamtramck City can make some money, and like a manager said, can, can control some of the point. So, this is no question for me to approve it.
Councilman's right, the, the law changed maybe a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
So, a lot for this.
Yeah, I, I mean, two years ago, we bought multiple properties for forty eight thousand, we sold them for four hundred fifty thousand. But during that time, the former city manager was under the impression that the money goes back to Wayne County, and she recommended not to buy them. But then I said, oh, just buy them and sell them to our residents, and then it turns out that that money is for the city. So, it's a good investment for us, but we, we did our duty by letting the residents know, or the owners, if they wanna act and save the properties, they could, but it seems like they chose not to. Uh, I'm just worried that Councilman Samiri will go and bid on them and take them.
Wayne County already be notified those people a million times, after that is came the.
All right, so, I guess we can, we can buy them and sell them.
Vote. Councilman Al Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty four seventy eight approved.
Thank you. It's a no brainer. Okay, next one is, uh, resolution F, for discussion common council appointment to planning commission.
Over.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Now, we can discuss this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Hassan.
I don't know how much experience you have about this, let me explain sixteen years' experience. Every two years, every mayor appoint the council, from the council, mayor is the one, bring the name, and council approve it. That's all happening, that's sixteen years, I mean, it's eight times I saw my life. So, the zoning appointee is coming through council members, then we approve. Planning commission, I want, I want attorney and city manager, everybody should look at that one, with the charter and the appointee thing. Planning commission, only the planning commission, mayor has the power, bring the name, council approve it. It's not the council appointee.
No.
Well, I, I want telling you that we're gonna, we're gonna clarify with that, who is gonna be right, you're gonna see the next meeting. So, I'm, let me explain with that. I'm sixteen years here, I saw the eight times. Mister, Miss Mayoski appointed the sumary, okay? So, that time, we always respect the mayor, we say yes, one time, we have a disagreement with the Mayoski. Even though we did not pass, she appoint her own appointee name. Yeah.
No.
One, no, yes, it's gonna be clear, it's gonna be clear.
Ex-official, the ex-official.
While council has to approve it, mayor is the one bring the name.
No, no. Wait a minute, we'll see now, I explained earlier, the ex-official council member is the only one in the planning appointed by the council member. If you used to do it in the previous, previous practice, then you used to do it wrong.
No, no, planning, no, nobody bring the name, mayor bring the name, and we approve it.
What, you're gonna.
Let's see that, yeah, let's see that. So, it's not the thing who is going, we respect you. You put the somebody name, and I will approve it, no matter what, I don't have no interest. What is the interest is coming, like you saying, we cannot find the people in the zoning, and everybody saying, yes, yes, don't know how to read, and somebody says something, and yes, same thing happening, some of the planning commission. So, and, and after that is count, and oh, God, what they did, they did the, they did the, I mean, the variance about the medical majority of things, zoning. Whatever our attorney already told them, yourselves told them, don't do it, but they did it, they did not, they don't know what is that, they don't know what going.
That's your appointment, that's the council.
Well, I just, I'm not telling you, I'm just telling everybody.
Well, I would turn it out to read that section.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it says that the city plan commission is hereby staffed, uh, so, sorry, the commission shall consist of the mayor of the city and one member of the common council to be selected by the common council as members executive. And seven other persons who shall be appointed by the mayor, as provided by the chapter, so it doesn't exactly say.
Read it again, he didn't get it.
I get it.
No, he didn't get it.
I, I.
The only thing, the city council member, one city council in the planning has to be appointed by the city council, every other member, don't.
But who bring the name, who bring the name?
Right, that's not clear.
Who bring the name, that's one layer, all respect, that's not clear, read it again.
The second sentence.
It just, all it says is that one member of the coun, common council to be selected by the common council.
By the council?
By the council, but not who bring the name.
Let's save this for later. Okay. The next sentence said.
That, he's right, seven other persons who shall be appointed by the mayor.
So the first by the council, others by the mayor.
Again and again.
It's clear, Hassan, it's clear.
Okay, let me explain.
No, don't explain, it's there.
No, no, no.
Read it again, please, read it.
Well, excuse me, I don't have to read, I have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
No, he's gonna read it and you...
No, I read it, I know what's there, let me explain it now.
No, he's gonna...
I have to speak now, I have to speak.
No, I make the rules. So he's gonna read it, then you speak.
Okay, go ahead, read it.
Read it, please.
Alright, so it says the commission shall consist of the mayor of the city, one member of the common council to be selected by the common council.
By the common council.
As members of ex officio and seven other persons who shall be appointed by the mayor.
By the mayor.
As a priority.
So one by the council, second by the mayor.
Can I speak now?
One by the council, seven by the mayor, it's clear, the second sentence.
Can I speak now?
You can speak now, yeah.
Okay. So there is nothing in this language saying who gonna bring the name.
It doesn't say.
That's what I was trying to tell you. There is nothing saying who gonna bring the name, okay? Let me explain to you, Mr. Mayor. So all of us, resolution come with the name. Council don't put the resolution for the planning commission. There is the all of us, go there. Hoyam Sumari was appointed, go please see who council brought Sumari's name? Nobody. It was came with the resolution, Sumari's name. Who brought the resolution? That time, it was the mayor, that's why I tried to explain to you.
It doesn't mean it was done correctly, doesn't mean, it doesn't mean it was done correctly. Because there is two separate sentences.
Excuse me, excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
I don't think you're gonna like what I'm gonna say, but I do think the mayor might be right here. Because basically here where it says, so where you remove from office upon written charge after public hearing, the mayor may remove a member other than the members selected by the council.
Other than him.
Other than the one selected by you.
So, okay, last time, last time, we need the one planning commission official, elected official here, who gonna bring the name?
You guys agree on it?
No, okay, what I'm saying is...
So I think what happened in the past is...
Yes, that's all I can explain.
Councilman is saying basically for the last sixteen years, the mayor has...
Mayor bring the name.
Has done that, but I don't, I think basically they would do that.
Did it the same way that they picked the president's, I'm sorry, the mayor pro temp? They picked a pro temp?
No, no.
Basically.
Resolution always come with the name. Resolution give with the name.
It doesn't matter about the resolution, here there is two separate sentences. Council member appointed by the council.
Okay.
Why interrupt me, let me finish this.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Council member appointed by the council, seven others appointed by the mayor, there is two separate sentences.
Okay.
And removal everyone by the mayor except the council by the council. So it's clear, there is two separate sentences.
So from going now on, well, after two years, Sumari term is expired.
I don't care, you guys decide.
I'm just talking.
I think it was, I think there's been a couple of things.
Hold on, hold on. So now, we're gonna practice, bring the name from the council for the planning commission, for the council.
Correct, and I think that, so the reason for confusion here is because of past practice was incorrect.
Yes.
So one of the things that they did in the past was they allowed for, for example, the mayor to be part of the, so the mayor can't, has to be the appointed member, he can't appoint, you know, so that was something that I think in the past they've done incorrectly, I think this was just not followed correctly.
That's right.
So now, the mayor is a hundred percent right, the law is what he's saying, and actually, your reasoning is correct. So, but I think that what the council is saying is that the past practice is correct. So what is correct though, moving forward, is what the law says.
Yeah.
The council should bring the...
So now the council gotta bring the name, that's it?
I have one question. I have a limitation for the council but being the planning commission.
There's only one, it says, so basically as it says is, and one member of the common council to be selected by the council as a member ex officio.
There's no limitation.
Although...
How many times?
Oh, there's no, there's no limitation to how many times.
So one person can be more than one?
Their appointment goes as long as, so, yeah, three years, exactly.
January first.
Yeah, well.
A same person can run more than one term.
Yeah, we renew members, I think it's the same thing.
So if you have, I mean, whoever interested, you can put your name up and then we can vote on it, without making argument, I think that's best.
I mean, to me, it doesn't matter, I'm not, I told you, it's your decision, not mine. So I, I'm not in favor for anyone, you guys decide, it's nothing, it's more work, more volunteer time. If you are committed and you want to attend more, you welcome.
I mean, I'm not so amends to make it so that two council members can be added if you want it, you have the power to do that.
Isn't that a charter?
Well, oh, this is a charter, yeah, you're right.
But, okay, can't one be the common council and one be a regular member?
No. One number from the council. One only.
So, yes, the completion.
Can I say one more?
Go ahead.
Please, by the charters, we are, all you work with the charter, but I don't want to buy a charter. I'm requesting you, maybe we can find some solution. I request all those councilmen, mayor also, can you help me out to tap this for one more meeting? Could we have a very good solution?
No, this is the discussion, there is no table.
Right, you've already discussed it, so it's not...
I'm discussing, if, I'm urging you, I'm urging my colleague, urging my friend, mayor also, I'm requesting to...
There is, Mr. Chair, there is no resolution, discussion over. If you wanna bring the resolution, then we're gonna talk.
Yeah, we just gonna discuss.
It's not charter, it's ordinance.
So I'm, this is the thing I'm discussing with you, if you guys allow me to, I hope we can have a better solution.
No, discussion done, you don't have to do it.
So by the next meeting...
So what do you mean, have you made the decision now?
No.
No, you don't have to.
Next meeting.
So next time, you guys discuss...
Yeah, this meeting, you can look more into any amendments.
Yeah, next time, if one interested, you can bring the resolution.
No, council already...
They make a resolution, one or two or three. I can, I can pronounce either Mohit or Mohit's name too.
No problem. Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
If we discuss, it's more work.
No problem.
Council, solution will be very easy.
Is it done?
So, now, now, Mr. Scott.
Yeah, so we will move on.
Thank you.
Whoever has time, I suggest you guys choose, agree, it's nothing, it's just more volunteer work. It's not a powerful position.
That's all volunteer.
Yeah.
If one, welcome, they welcome in a group.
So...
We're working like five, six years.
Sumari is the man of the...
For many years, not just for the planning commission.
Solution is in your hand.
You should have the business tool and spend time some...
Alright.
I don't care who's gonna pick.
I'm not thinking about those option properties.
So, I think we don't...
I can, somebody who know how to do it, he's gonna pick. Somebody come up.
Alright, okay, so we moved the, we moved the last resolution from the consent agenda to be G.
No.
No.
Oh, oh, you removed it, you're right, yeah, you're right, so we removed it. Are we trying to bring it back or no?
No.
So that means they're not excused?
No, they are not excused, they are excused.
Because last time we approved that up to last week.
Up to the day?
No. Alright, so now, alright, I guess we discussed, we finished with this last resolution and we move to the report, and I'll start with my report. I think today is the meeting where we had the hottest discussion. I apologize if I raise my voice, it's just that I was sure that I read it multiple times and I understood that it's the way that we, that the attorney explained it at the end. But we always disagree and we come up to an agreement at the end. Councilman Hassan definitely has more experience than all of us. But sometimes, previous practice is not always the right thing. So I appreciate, you know, we always seek consultation from you when we have difficult situations, so thank you. So I was, for the past two days, I was in Washington DC. We had a conference to advocate for Yemen, meet with some senators there and talk about the Yemeni situation. So I was there yesterday during the conference, I was one of the speakers along with Representative Ayashi was there too. What was funny is I, the one who made the reservation for me, I told him I have to come back on Tuesday for the meeting, I can't stay. So he reserved for me, he booked the flight that I come back at ten PM today. And he told me it's set for ten AM. So I went to the airport today and I got there and I was looking at the screen, there is no flight, you know, to Detroit at ten, at ten AM. I went to the, you know, the American Airlines agent and she looked, she was like, this is ten PM, not AM. I was like, there is no way, I didn't even pay attention myself, I trusted the guy who reserved it. So I go, okay, listen, I have to be there before five PM. They wouldn't change the flight for me, they refused. They said you don't have the privilege of changing the flight without paying. I was like, look, I've been the mayor for two years and a half and I have never missed a meeting. I'm not gonna miss this meeting for stupid reason like this. So I ended up paying two-hundred-and-seventy, booked another flight and came on time. I arrived at four PM today, so I don't have, so I don't miss this meeting. So I guess Councilman Samir will pay me that ticket. So I'm here back, I mean, we had fun over the past two days, met a lot of people from different states. And we had a great discussion. I, I think that's, that's all for me, I don't have anything else to say today. But it's now the mayor pro temp's report, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is summertime, especially on the community, a lot of picnic event going on. So last Sunday, we had like, I attended almost three different picnic. And end of the day, around five o'clock, we had a long and big impact Hindu rally, starting from the Delagar and Belmont. Our congressman, Siti Nanda was there. And our mayor called me up from Washington, this is a, Mayor Pro Temp, I cannot be attend this rally, you will be attend for yourself on behalf of me. So I try my best, I was there, but it was good rally, they were resident, they were all people, they make a good rally. Unfortunately, on this rally, became some ugly, what is called a social media message against myself, Councilman Mohit, and especially councilmen. Some people misjudged, they saw we are doing the rally, that they go there some different way. And somebody, some people, little bit, need to be a little bit more careful to make the comment. Not only for me, any public official or anybody else, don't, and it was harmful, it was painful for me. Some people say, how much I take money to, somebody bought me. And I told them, I'm just telling you in front of you guys, I'm the person, I cannot be sold. And if you justify somebody's, please feel free contact with me. Find the next explanation of what's going, what's going on there. And those even, only for the Hindu rallies. If anybody listened to my speech, nothing but Hindu rallies. And thank you to become, come there and thank you to invite us. I hope all of my friends, political activists and any residents, I'm from Michigan, before you try to acquiesce somebody, please go a little bit further. We are very close to reach out. You can reach us in the mosque, you can reach us in the shop, you can reach us anywhere, kind of, I'm just talking about every places. You can ask me or ask any of our colleague, I saw something, maybe it is not right. We can explain you properly. But it is a, it is a good rally and everybody was enjoying there, our city manager was there. Thank you, this afternoon, a lot of people coming to join with us, our council meeting. And thank you, whoever are connected with the social media or TVs. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you. So, alright, we move to the city council report, who would like to start?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I just found a very interesting city business directory today, they say, it's really funny. This picture is, Ida, Ida, Brahma Ash, name is Ida Robinson. He passed three, four years before maybe.
Where did you find this?
Hampton, what is called?
Review, the Hampton Review.
Published, it's a book, it's a magazine.
Oh.
So anyways, I sent it to Brahma Ash and he was like, what did you find it? So anyways, probably this mistake happens, but this is, Ida Brahma Ash been a, you know, elected official for last six, four times, right, four years. Secondly, just...
Just one more time, you want me to?
The handicap sign, just may I ask, Mr. Mayor, what are you up to now? There is a lot of handicap sign inactive in our city and people complaining about it. Like people move out of the city or, you know, they don't belong to this house, but sign is still there, so it's really very difficult for them to move apart.
So they just gotta let us know if there's one that's inactive, I mean, we're happy to check on them and then get them yanked out.
Okay, I can ask those people, but is there a way, there's many of them all over the city, is there any way to check?
We do annually send out the renewals, and if people pay for them, we leave them, if they don't pay for them, we pull them out. I mean, there could be a few that are backlog, but, and we do occasionally come across, candidly come across a few that just are backlog because the guys are busy. And then when those are brought to our attentions, I usually send someone out and just get it pulled quickly. But most of them should be active, so.
Yeah, we pull them out for a bit.
Yeah, it shouldn't, there shouldn't be like a glutton of them. But I mean, if there is some in question, just tell them, send us an email or come see us, or councilman, if you just wanna send them over, we'll check on them as we go. My guess is most of them are probably active in the residence.
Sure, I'll do that, also please use our resources to make sure that no, no one's having their sign even if they moved from the city or they're not belong to this house.
We do pull them, absolutely.
One of the things, I know some reason maybe the camera that you install, I don't see personally. But my personal opinion, if you put it out to the public, maybe it will reduce our speeding people. Even though it's not the purpose of the speeding, but people will scare somehow not to speed on our, because we will get a complaint. Like today, a young man came in, he said someone was driving sixty mile speed limit on his street. You know, people see all those cameras hanging out there like other, some other cities, it's sort of in hiding area. It will make awareness that cities are watching us. I don't know, that's my personal opinion, you can think about the police team or you. It's nothing hiding, we have camera in our city, I will pass by the city council and it's been installed, so. That's, that's it, nothing else, and thank you, as Mr. Mayor Pro Temp said, the rally was really wonderful, we all have fun. Some people probably misunderstood us, you know, as an elected official congressman is trying to come to our city. Doesn't mean that we're supporting him and we are campaigning about him. So people have misconstrue, you know, we try to make this clear, we like, we had to like Facebook channel today, me, for the council, and I explain our standpoint, that's not our purpose. And here they be right to come anywhere, he get invited, we can protect people to come into our city. And if somebody comes, we have to give his value, he's still our congressman, he's still a chair, and we still have to have a good relation, working relationship. You know, we still have to respect all the elected officials who ever representing in their areas. So that was a misunderstanding in the community, there is nothing, we're not promoting anyone, that is not our purpose. We don't invite him, he came, he's already invited, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
So I just wanna, I know, I apologize, but I just wanna try to tell you what's happening.
In the past?
No, not only in the past, not even three hours ago, what happened. Okay, three hours ago, what happened? This is the way, now, the planning commission, start with the like a mayor pro temp things, talking, pulling side, don't do it, do it. Three councilmen told me to bring this resolution, three of them. So, three of them told me to bring the resolution. Now, somebody one councilman talked to another councilman and biased it. For this reason, previous practice, mayor, we give the mayor respect. You mayor, pick any name, we all gonna vote for whatever you say. I tried to explain to you that one. So three councilmember, three of them, promised me to bring. Now, one councilmember talked to other councilmember, paying back, paying back. That kinds of situation, we don't want here. That's why I tell you, still requesting you, you bring one name, anybody, and I promise, all gonna vote for you, then all the... Then, all the conflict is gone. Why you gonna take the one conflict?
Alright.
You understand?
Give me the permission, I'll do it.
I do, I give my permission.
Are you guys okay?
I'm okay.
Alright, I'll do it.
That's why we pull him here, three hours ago, change everything. So, why you have to waste your time for the, like Sumari says, volunteer job? The thing is here, we try to eliminate the conflict. That's all. Second, uh, I wanna, uh, send the message to my colleague, colleague Rafai and Satma. We, okay, there is the ten unexcused absences. Okay, five month. We already approve you guys. Two month, three month, still you have an excuse, you can keep it. So, if you wanna take ten of them, same time, how many month? Five month. So, as a resident, not council member, as a resident, I make you councilman to take five month off every year? It's not that. Uh, again, who is behind of this, bring the resolution again and again, they still have ten more. They can take it, not, not three same times. So, this is the request, is the responsibility, like the other day, Bill Meyer said. Responsibility, respect. Yes, we did not tell you guys, we're not gonna approve any other. With what we said, is sit as an excuse and we revisit. What is the meaning of revisit? We will come back again after circumstances, we will approve it. That is the thing. Let's say today, my heartbeat was too, so high, you know, I, I'm taking the, even though I'm coming here, I'm thinking I'm gonna go back my car, take the heart medicine again. So, that kinds of situation, I have to come to keep the cora, cora. So, what I did wrong? So, that's all basically, and right now, lots of propaganda is going the Bangali community. Uh, no doubt, we all boarding for Mary Water. And we'll, we endorse, I endorse her and I'm gonna work for her, no matter what. I'm not doing my campaign because I cannot afford it. But if I don't do my campaign, I'm campaigning for Mary Water and myself. Just wanna clear that one. We all have to vote for Mary Waters, no question. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. I, I think, uh, just correction then, unexcused, uh, absences are five consecutive ones, right?
Yeah.
Or ten, you know.
Yeah.
And we will probably bring a resolution every meeting when they're not here and you choose to do what you want with the resolution.
Thank you. And that was also previous practice.
Alright, thank you. So, uh, anyone else? Alright, so, so we move to the public council.
Ahmishar, three minutes, two minutes.
I'm asking for one more minutes before I start it. Name, Ahmishar Ladeen, human rights activist and social activist. Uh, to speak today to thank, uh, city manager for fixing the park for the kids. My children, there's, uh, two of them and there's hundreds now who want to tend that park. But we have a legal issue now, and I know he was aware of, uh, wanna show our lawyer before we move on in this. I would like you to see this, and I know that I'm not the city manager. I did ask the city, I emailed one of, I mean, each person of the city council to look at it, this city have an issue with the emails. I asked to fix it and remove it, I was rejected. So, if the city won't do it, it's not a threat. I am moving with a legal lawsuit against the city. Well, can you explain this?
Uh, it's a park bench and it appears there's a nail that, uh, is a little odd.
Person was sit on it, already he was, uh, at the hospital the other week. And I did ask, I know that's not at you, sir. I know you try to help me and you did. If they get to be removed and replaced, I was promised, not as a Ahmishar, as one of the member, they're gonna be removed and replaced. I was offering to fix it from my own pocket. I was said, no. So, I don't know why I was rejected, probably that's a couple thousand dollars. But I know the city says, no, I can not even touch it, not remove it, not fix it. But still, here, I would like to thank Mr. Max, thank you very much, I know you did a lot.
Where, where's it at? I don't know.
Okay, it's actually three of them and I, uh, I have the person actually videotape, was, was he in the hospital, he was sit on that one?
Where's, where's this one?
One minute.
It's, uh, one minute of the two, right?
No.
No, I have three of them.
Okay, I would like each one, I sent email.
Now, don't you ask you, right, we're to kiss, uh, Max or city manager, you'll take, take care of.
They just one of them.
Gentlemen's park.
I would like you to see it. You gotta stay at the podium.
I'm not, I stand by the podium, look at it.
Yeah.
He's asking the name of the park, is it?
Oh, no, no, just fix, uh, that's.
It's a veterans?
Yeah. I spoke, yeah, yeah. I spoke to the lady who was doing it, she promised me it's gonna be fixed within a week, she said she's gonna replace it. But I, I, I said, as I said, I sent emails and it's actually four of them the same way. If one of the children would get hit in their head and their eye, stuff like this when they play, it's gonna be an issue. Once again, I can fix it out of my own pocket.
Thank you.
Sorry about inconvenience, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I, I don't think I should do, but.
That's it.
I mean, you, you can speak like this time.
Now, I say, my Max will take care of it, I know, sorry about inconvenience, my premier, the word, he mentioned me, he said.
I don't see.
That's all for public comment.
Alright, so, uh, I guess we have, uh.
Close session.
Close session.
You want to call?
So, you're to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
Right.
So, I need a motion to start the close session?
Motion to start the call station, please.
Is the meeting adjourned?
Uh, no, it's, uh, we're going to close session. But you'll have to do, and the close session is starting at eight forty-three.